Good evening. I now call to order the May 7th, 2025 special city council meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian and council members Albrecht Shapiro and Weintraub, as well as city staff. If you would like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. Tonight, we'll start off with our pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join me. All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Closed session report. We did meet in closed session before this. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We did meet in closed session to discuss two matters of existing litigation, the city of Calabasas versus County Sanitation District Number Two, as well as the Mountains Restoration Trust, doing business as Tree People Land Trust versus the city of Calabasas, as well as three additional items of potential or anticipated litigation. No reportable action was taken on any of the items that were discussed.
All right, thank you. Moving into our next item, the sheriff's crime report for March 2025. Can I call up Deputy De Matteo to make the presentation?
Evening. I am Deputy De Matteo of the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. Thank you for having me. We've been pretty busy lately, going to a lot of meetings, doing motorcycle enforcement, burglary suppression, had a productive meeting with the Public Safety Commission on Monday, so we've been busy and productive. I've got the crime report for March 2025. Let's get started. In March, we had three assaults. I want to discuss one of them. One of them relates to an incident that happened just before I got here. It's a road rage incident. So this occurred on Lost Hills Road involving two adults engaged in road rage. The victim sustained a cut to his hand during an argument, and instead of calling 911, the victim drove to a nearby fire station for treatment, who then got transported to a hospital and contacted law enforcement. Nothing good can come from road rage. I recommend you avoid it at all costs. You never know who you're dealing with. Collect yourself and carry on, and if you need to, call 911 to report the incident as it's unfolding. We did have one robbery. This incident took place at a retail establishment on Agora Road. One male adult suspect entered the store and attempted to steal merchandise. As an employee attempted to intervene, the suspect swung a baseball bat at the employee in a threatening and assaultive manner and fled the location without paying. That suspect was later located by deputies and arrested. We did have two residential burglaries. One burglary occurred on the Bird Streets neighborhood, just north of Calabasas High School. This one was a little unique. Owners of a vacant home conducted a weekly check of that location and noticed a rear window had been pried open and various utilities had been used. The other burglary occurred in the Calabasas Lake neighborhood. Residents went out of town for three days, and upon their return, observed the rear glass window was shattered and jewelry was stolen from the master bedroom. We did have three vehicle burglaries and four thefts from unlocked vehicles, two petty thefts and six grand thefts. Those grand thefts, three of those were retail-based, two were personal property disputes, and to top it off, somebody cut off the brass connectors from a fire hydrant near AC Stella. Finally, this doesn't really apply to the March crime report, but I know trucks parking on Agora Road is a hot topic, so I wanted to discuss that. Since the resolution was passed, Lost Hills Station has issued 17 parking citations to those trucks. Twelve of those citations were issued on the night of the 27th, and three more were issued on the night of the 28th, with two more on the 30th. In addition to those parking citations, I did go to the Goodnight Inn motel. I brought a copy of the resolution with me. I gave it to the manager of that establishment, discussed with them that parking of these trucks were not allowed, and that if truckers were to come in to get a room, that I hope that she would warn and advise them of that new resolution. So that's what's been happening recently and for the month of March 2025. Any questions, comments, or concerns for this report?
So before I go to our council for comments, I understand that there is also promotions and exciting things going on with the leadership at our Lost Hills Station. Did you want to share any of that?
Yes. Captain C2 will be leaving us very soon. She is being promoted to commander. Where is she going to be? I don't know yet, but I know she will be moving on here shortly. So you guys get to go through the selection process all over again.
And I understand Lieutenant Carr will be our acting captain?
Yes, he will be acting as, or he will be the acting captain in her place until an official captain can be selected.
Well, we're very excited for Captain C2 and her promotion, and excited to see what happens with the Lost Hills Station. With that, I'll start with Councilmember Cummins. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy, thank you very much. I enjoy you coming to council and explaining to us what's going on. It's a war out there, I know, and you fight it well. Two of the things that I was going to ask you this morning, this evening, you had already answered, so I'm happy to hear that, because I saw the deputy car flashing on my way to council, and he was rolling pretty fast.
Yes.
So it was a real deal, and it wasn't a speeding ticket, so I was happy to hear, not happy that that happened, but I'm happy it wasn't worse than what it could have been.
There was a road rage incident tonight over near Park Aura and Valmar. An individual, two individuals stopped in the middle of traffic, and one of them had a firearm and brandished that firearm. So we got as much information about the suspect that we could. Deputy did write a report about the incident, and unfortunately, we were unable to locate him, so that's what's...
Yeah, it's odd that it would happen there, because that's an interesting, quiet kind of intersection. I take Park Aura to come here, so it really took me by surprise to see that. I'd just like to say that as far as Captain C2 is concerned, she's left a great legacy. We're a grateful community to her and wish her well, and certainly tell her that myself, as all of the council members I'm sure will as well. So I do have one last question, not to drag out the question period. I meant to ask you this last time you were here. What's the status with Flock these days? Is it proving again to be as successful as we found it to be in the beginning, about resolution for prosecution and otherwise? Could you just talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, Flock is great. It is excellent. I wish we had more of it, but it is used in investigations every day.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, and thank you Deputy De Matteo. Also extend all of our congratulations to, I guess, Commander C2.
Right.
At this point, I hope and trust she will remain involved in this area, as we appreciate it and look forward to the leadership as the cities get involved and do their diligent work to select. And thank you. A number of us attended. I know the sheriff's open house. That was a great opportunity to see for the community what, all the great things that you are doing and everybody at the station, so that was wonderful. The burglaries, the robberies, rather, the break-ins, are they the same type of patterns that we've seen in these areas? Are they coming in your, in the station's estimation from open space? Is that, are they the same types of crews and groups that we have seen throughout the region, throughout our city, throughout the years as well?
Well, for the last six months, we've seen the common theme of nighttime burglaries. Houses targeted are those in gated communities that back up to open space. They're looking for homes that look vacant. So up until recently, this month, we've had a change in that behavior. We have had a couple of homes broken into in the middle of the day, 11:00 AM, 12:00 PM. So that's something we are looking into. It's definitely different suspects in this case. I don't want to give too many details, but yeah, we are seeing a difference, so.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank everybody at the station. I'll ask you one last time, I do it every time. Can you advise the public, all of us, what things we can do to better protect our homes, our personal property, of course, people, but, and vehicles? What things people can do in the community to help better make them safe?
Yeah. So just on Monday, before the Public Safety Commission meeting, I did go to a street in Calabasas to talk about home hardening for residential burglaries. It was pretty great. Almost every resident on that street showed up, and we had a conversation in one of the residents' backyards, and we discussed how to protect yourself against burglaries. It was great. And so what I can recommend is to make sure your doors and windows are locked. That's number one. Number two, if you have an alarm, set it before you leave. Number three, cameras and lighting, very important. But if you can, look into getting the newest technology that cameras have to offer, and ensure that those cameras, when they're installed, are installed, they're hardwired. They're installed via LAN. So I say that because burglary crews have recently been known to use Wi-Fi signal jamming technology when they commit their burglaries, so if you have Wi-Fi-based cameras, they will not work. And then lastly, just talk with your neighbors, create like an informal neighborhood watch, if you will. Communicate with your neighbors, look out for one another, and then obviously, report all suspicious activity to the sheriff's station.
Thank you. And one last thing. How would residents in the community connect with the sheriff's station by way of their cameras, their ring, their electronic surveillance protection?
So we do have a program. It's called ConnectLosAngelesCounty.org. It is a camera integration system. You can sign up for that program for free. All it does is, it registers your camera with our station, so that detectives know there's cameras at your house. In the event a crime occurs, detectives can reach out to you to see if your camera caught any of that crime. So I know I've reached out to a couple of property management companies today. The company that runs ConnectLosAngelesCounty will be out here, I believe, on the 20th and 21st, and they want to reach out to as many HOAs as they can to see if they're interested in signing up for integrating their cameras for our real-time watch center. So that just came out before I got here also, so that's developing, but that's something we can look forward to.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Weintraub?
I just wanted to say thank you for staying on top of all of these issues. I feel like we're doing the best job we can, being proactive, especially with the e-bikes and educating people on home hardening against burglaries. So I really appreciate being proactive in all of these situations. And very sad about Captain C2, but very happy for her personally and professionally. She absolutely deserves this opportunity, so we'll see what's next at the station.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I don't have anything to add. I've discussed with you, Mason, the issue of residential burglaries. It remained a little bit higher than we normally have here. I did want to wish Captain C2 well, and if you could let us know what opportunities there are for, I mean, over the years, it's just varied on what kind of council input they take as to the new captain and what our expectations are, but I'm sure all of us would like to be at least asked, like what our thoughts are, and we'd like to participate.
Of course. And I too want to congratulate Captain C2 on her promotion. We will miss her dearly. Hopefully, she will still reside in West Lake Village and at least have to drive through our city to get to work. And I'm sure she won't be a stranger here. Just two items I want to kind of clarify that were brought up by others. You mentioned the registering your cameras with the Connect...
ConnectLosAngelesCounty.org.
And to be clear, for the residential program, those cameras are not monitored live?
Correct.
They're only, they reach out to us in the event that there's an incident in the neighborhood looking for footage, but they don't monitor the residential cameras live?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And for our commercial program, they can
Yes.
allow the sheriff's station to monitor those cameras live?
Yes, that is correct.
Two different programs. And if somebody was on the commercial side wanting to get involved, do they go to the same website address, or do they contact the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station?
They can do either.
Okay. One last thing. You did mention that a collection of people on a street wanted to get together and get some advice from you. If there's anybody listening that wants to do the same, obviously, we'd encourage homeowners associations and larger groups so that we don't waste all of your time, but how does an organization reach out and arrange something like that with you?
This specific neighborhood had a property manager reach out to me. You don't have to do that. You can email me or call the station and ask for me. If I'm not available, I'll always call you back or email you back, and then we can set something up. And it's hard to do, it's hard to get everybody involved, but the more, the better. So I encourage every neighborhood to do it. Reach out, and we'll get something started.
Great. And the non-emergency number for the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station that they can call is?
Yeah, 818-878-1808. Put it in your phone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay, our next presentation this evening is the 2024 American Public Works Association. And if I can find my, hold on. Give me one second, and I'll make the correct and proper introductions here. Am I on the wrong item? Oh, it's split between the pages, and, okay. So the Ventura Chapter Project of the Year Award is being presented tonight. Public Works Director Curtis Castle is going to introduce our presenter.
So thank you, Mayor. And before I introduce our presenter, I just want to, I want to thank you all and the community, because the projects in the right of ways, we know, when they're under construction, they're painful. And this one was right by the schools as well, so it was on a major corridor, and we worked through a lot of utility delays and some other, you know, things that pop up during construction. And so I just want to put that thank you out there to you all in the community for helping us get through that project. It's a wonderful project. The end result is great. And with that, I'd like to welcome Tim Powers to provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Kraut, Mayor Pro Tem Bazagian, and honorable city council members. My name is Tim Powers. I'm a senior project manager with the Caguas Municipal Water District, and I also proudly serve as this year's director-at-large for the Ventura County Chapter of the American Public Works Association. I'm here tonight representing the APWA, a nationwide organization of 32,000 dedicated public works professionals, and our chapter, with well over 300 active members, is one of the most active chapters in the nation. Now, each year, our chapter recognizes exceptional public works projects throughout the Ventura County region with our project of the, with the Project of the Year awards. And tonight, it's my great pleasure to present the city of Calabasas with the APWA Project of the Year Award in the environmental category, honoring the outstanding Old Topanga Canyon Road, Mulholland Highway Improvement Project. Now, I would like to extend my congratulations to Public Works Director and City Engineer Curtis Castle, former Deputy Public Works Director Tatiana Holden, Assistant Engineer Trea Desney, Assistant Engineer Soheil Shaklar, Public Works Superintendent Luis Hernandez, and Management Analyst Melanice Stepanian, as well as the entire city of Calabasas project team. Their dedication and hard work have resulted in enhancements to the city, greatly elevating the residents' overall quality of life. Now, improving transportation infrastructure is essential for creating sustainable and resilient communities. The road widening and other enhancements achieved in this project not only ease traffic ingestion, but also contribute to reducing vehicle emissions and thereby improving overall air quality. Additionally, by increasing safety for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians, this project fosters a safer and healthier environment for all. And furthermore, these improvements also support local and economic growth and enhance emergency response efficiencies, making the city of Calabasas more adaptable to future needs and overall a more sustainable and resilient urban environment. Key project achievements include a new traffic signal at the Old Topanga Canyon Road and Mulholland intersection, new sidewalks, crosswalks, and shoulder widening, improved stormwater management at Old Topanga Canyon Road and Wild Walnut Park, and retaining walls and erosion control measures to protect slopes along the runway, roadway, apologies. The success of this project reflects the visionary leadership of the city council, extensive and continuous community engagement, and strong collaborative partnerships the city has maintained with consultants, contractors, and fellow public agencies, including the Los Verges Municipal Water District. Once again, on behalf of the APWA, congratulations to the city of Calabasas on this well-deserved Project of the Year Award. Thank you.
Can we have a stand? I think we're going to get a picture.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you, guys.
I will add a quick footnote that this project also was what allowed us to easily connect a restroom building at our Wild Walnut Park, so it did open more doors than one. Any members of council wishing to speak on the subject? Councilmember Weintraub?
I just wanted to say, this is one of those projects that you kind of forget how it never existed, so it really is a great project, and it was a lot to go through during the process with construction, but it's just so seamless, being able to walk all the way down into Wild Walnut and just the light and everything, so job well done to you and your team, so thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Shapiro?
I'd just add congratulations to Curtis and the entire staff and our city manager as well for the great work. This is, this was a project that took quite a while from start to finish, and really came out beautifully. I mean, with all the little speed bumps along the way, it really came out beautifully for not just the community, but also the students and anyone who wishes to access the park or safely traverse those areas and environmentally sound as well, so thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Albrecht?
Curtis, it was amazing, from start to finish. And it was a great learning experience on a lot of levels, particularly with the issues with the school and it's setting a pattern for the future, so we know how to be more careful with things. And you had this thrown at you when you first came to us, and you hit the road running. And now that roadway looks like we're rolling out the red carpet. So we got a little more to do, so you'll have some more work coming up, hopefully soon. Thank you very, very much, the staff, everybody involved with it.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No, just congratulations. I don't have anything else to add.
All right. I'll throw you one more curveball then. How did we pay for the project?
So it was paid for through local return, and I believe we also used some REMRA, some SB1 money for that, so there was no general fund money put in the project.
Love hearing that. Thank you. All right. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Item number seven then is the Los Angeles County Public Works Consolidated Sewer Maintenance District, proposed 2025 rate increase, and our Public Works Director Curtis Castle will introduce the presentation.
Thank you again, Mayor. So tonight, we have representatives from LA County Consolidated Sewer Maintenance District, and just for those that are watching, that's housed under LA County Public Works Department. And with us tonight is Andrew Ngumba to give us a presentation on some upcoming changes.
Thank you, Curtis. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of Calabasas. My name is Andrew Ngumba, and I'm the division chief in charge of Sewer Maintenance Division for LA County Public Works. Thank you for the opportunity for being here to be able to discuss with you the proposed rate increases in the Sewer Maintenance District. As an overview, I'd like to discuss what the consolidated sewer maintenance district is, for those who may not be familiar. We'll talk about the services that we provide to the city's sewer system. We'll talk a little bit about finances, including the proposed rate increase, and then I will talk about the engagement that's planned for the community as part of this process. So if you're not familiar, the Consolidated Sewer Maintenance District is a financing district whose purpose is to collect sewer service fees from the customers to operate and maintain the sewer systems within the Anning-Corporal County area and 38 member cities. The district actually operates under agreements from each member city to operate and maintain its sewer system. We have more than 500,000 parcels within the district, which amounts to a little more than 2 million customers. Some of the infrastructure we maintain includes more than 4,600 miles of sewer lines, 87 pump stations, and then through special service zones, we actually maintain four treatment plants. So our services encompass the entire county area. Calabasas is more towards our west, and it's served along with our Santa Clarita service area, and we do have 200 employees spread out throughout the county to provide services to our member cities in the Anning-Corporal County area. To help understand the infrastructure that we maintain, we maintain what is called the local main sewer line. So this is the sewer line that's in front of the properties, in front of your houses. The line that goes from the property to the main sewer line is actually called the house lateral. That is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain that. The system we maintain is actually called the collection system, and what that does is it collects wastewater from properties, and then it conveys it to larger sewer lines, which we call trunk lines, typically maintained by the sanitation district, but in the case of Calabasas, maintained by the Los Verges Municipal Water District. And that's conveyed to their treatment plants for treatment and disposal. It goes without saying that municipal sewer systems make our modern way of life possible. In addition, they do ensure public health, they protect the environment, and they also help our cities actually grow in a resilient and sustainable manner. So their operation and maintenance and care is critical to their functioning. We offer our services in mainly three categories. The main category that we do offer is preventative maintenance. What this consists of is regular cleanings of the sewer lines. This is like hydro jetting, mechanical rotting. We do respond to service requests for things like orders, pests, noisy manholes, and then we also help the cities comply with all regulations pertaining to their wastewater system. We televise sewer lines on a regular basis to assess their condition, and from these condition assessments, we make recommendations. condition assessments, we make recommendations for repair. We are implementing enhanced asset management systems, which will help us extend the life of this infrastructure, and then we also provide 24-hour emergency response, and this is to address things like sewer line backups, overflows, and any pump station malfunctions. Specifically in the city, the city has about 7,200 parcels within the Sewer Maintenance District, and this amounts to about 9,000 sewage units. A sewage unit is a basis upon which the sewer service charge is levied, so for example, one sewage unit is equivalent to one single family home. The infrastructure in the city is about 390,000 feet of sewer lines, there are about 1,800 manholes in the city, and two pump stations. The maintenance we do on a regular basis for the city include as-needed and periodic cleaning of the sewer lines, we do inspect each manhole twice per year, we inspect the pump stations twice per week, and then, as I mentioned before, if we find any deficiencies in the system, we would conduct the repairs. It is important to note that although we operate and maintain the sewer system, the city remains a legal owner of the sewer infrastructure, and as a legal owner, there are certain legal responsibilities they do maintain as part of the owner, being owners. The condition of the city's infrastructure is actually pretty good. About, about 94% of the city's infrastructure is free of significant defects. About the 6% that were identified to have significant defects, the most critical ones have already been addressed, the rest are on a priority list for repairs and have been put on an enhanced maintenance schedule. We do estimate about $2 million to address all the infrastructure repairs we need to do for the city. So the sewer rates in the Sewer Maintenance District were last increased in 2014, so for the last 11 years, we've had the same sewer service charge, and what this has done is it's led to stagnant revenues, while the cost to maintain the sewer system has increased. The cost of labor, the cost of materials, construction costs, all have gone up. For example, labor alone has increased more than 60% in the last 10 years, so we are finding ourselves in a place where we have increasing costs for operational maintenance and stagnant The graphic on the right is a snapshot of the financials of the district. The blue line represents the revenues we collect in the district, the brown line represents expenditures, and the red dash line represents reserves or fund balance, as we like to call it. As I mentioned, the expenditures have exceeded the amount of revenue we've been collecting, and so for the last few years, we've actually been operating at a deficit, so what that has done is led to declining reserve and fund balance, and we actually anticipate to have a negative fund balance by the end of the next fiscal year. The bulk of the expenditures in the district go to preventative maintenance, condition assessment, and repairs. Those three categories take up 90% of our expenditures, 5% is used for emergency response, and then 5% is used for administrative costs. Public Works hired an independent consultant to evaluate our finances and recommend a sustainable funding level for the Sewer Maintenance District. This study has actually been shared with the city staff, and as a result of this study, we are recommending increasing the current $50 per year per sewage unit fee by $14 per year for three consecutive years, and then by the rate of inflation for another two years. What we're looking at after about five years is about $45, which is a little bit under $4 a month. So for a single-family home that currently pays $50 per year, we'll be paying about $96 after five years. Multifamily properties will usually pay multiples of the sewage charge based on the number of units, and businesses will pay multiples of the sewer service charge based on the land use per county code. This is just a comparison of sewer rates within the area, within the region. The blue part of the graph shows a collection charge, and then the purple part shows a treatment and disposal charge. So most people in LA County will pay two fees for the sewage services. They will pay a collection fee charged either by the Sewer Maintenance District or the city, and then they'll pay a treatment and disposal fee, which goes to the San District for most of the county, but for Calabasas and the western part of the county, goes to Los Vergines Municipal Water District. Our collection fee is pretty competitive, actually we had a few others we didn't include in here. The collection fee in the city of Los Angeles is about $236 per year, and many others, you know, exceed $100 per year. Ours is $50 right now, after five years, we'll be at about $96, which is still gonna be competitive in the area. Anytime a government agency wants to either impose or increase a property base fee, like a sewer service charge, they have to comply with the requirements of Proposition 218, which in its most basic sense requires that we notice all the affected property owners of the changes, provide them with a means to protest, and then inform them of the public hearing at which the rate increase will be considered. We do intend to go above and beyond the requirements of Prop 218. We plan on engaging with the communities. We have collaborated with community-based organizations to co-create materials, use their communication channels, and helping us also with multilingual support, with the intention of making sure that the constituents understand what sewer services they receive, why there's a proposed rate increase, and why it's at this time. As far as timeline, we did complete our rate study in January, and beginning March, in March, April through May, we are conducting outreach, we're gonna be doing open houses, we're gonna be doing community events and webinars, and then on June 24th, the board of supervisors is gonna consider this rate increase, and in the absence of a majority protest, will approve the rate increase, and if that happens, the rates should be effective in July of this year. These are actually collected on the property tax roll, so constituents and customers should see them on the 25, 26 tax calendar year. Proposition 218 notices have been sent to all our customers in the district, they were sent out last week, so most people should have gotten them, or they should be getting them soon, and this notice has information about the services we provide, it has information about the Prop 218 process, which includes a protest process, where they can go to the public hearing, we know where to mail their protest letters they need to protest, and also how to engage with us. There's gonna be information about open houses and webinars, and then there's gonna be a link to resources. We have a website dedicated to this effort, that customers can go to and learn more information about the services and the increase. Any comments, questions about Prop 218 can be sent to the contact information, we have an email that's set up, and we have a hotline that has multilingual support, and then of course, like I mentioned, we do offer 24-hour emergency response, and the number to call is 800-675-help, and that's what your constituents can use to address any sewer-related concerns. That is my presentation, but happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you for that, and we'll start with some council questions if there are any, I'll begin with Councilmember Weintraub.
I don't really have any questions, the presentation was pretty detailed. I've had to engage with your department a few times regarding, like, issues, and you've been nothing but responsive, so I do have to say that it's, I feel like LA County Public Works, I see your trucks out in our community very frequently, so you are doing good work out here, so I just wanted to throw that out there for people that are watching. Can you just go back to the slide where it showed where there would be public meetings? I think it was on the postcard, I don't know, I guess we can't really zoom in. Will there be any meetings in the San Fernando Valley?
Yes, there's actually gonna be a meeting here at this community center on June 17th.
There you go, okay, so we can help promote that information.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you for the comment.
I don't have any questions, thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you for the presentation, just, just for clarification for anybody who is watching and may not have got the number, what is the number, any resident who, or business entity in the city who needs to contact for an emergency, what number is that to contact you at?
So that number is on the screen, and it's 1-800-675-help, and that's a 24-hour emergency response number.
Thank you, and then, on one of the slides, you had the different cities, and I didn't get, there was a green section of the chart along with a blue current rates, I know we were close, very close to San Fernando at this point on that chart, for the current collection, that was it.
Yeah.
And then, and then I'm looking at, San Fernando is, as far as, well, it's actually combined collection and treatment charge, is a lot less than Calabasas, is, can you explain why that is the case? Is it having anything to do with topography, length of years of the infrastructure, or is there any particular reason?
Yeah, so San Fernando, actually, they have their collection and treatment handled by the city of Los Angeles, and so that's the rate that they do charge them, but actually, the city of LA went through a recent rate increase, and, you know, I apologize for not having that up there, but their rates are definitely much higher than most in the region. Their collection charge alone is around $230 per year for the city.
And I presume West Hollywood's sewer rates will also be projected to be increased, just as you're...
We expect that they will increase as well, and the red for them, that goes to the San District, San District actually handles their treatment and disposal.
Thank you very much, thank you for the thorough report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
Hi, thank you, great presentation, just curious, it's not like we get an opportunity to talk about this to you very often, but just in general, what's your assessment of Calabasas and its equipment, how is it held up?
In terms of the, like, the pump station and the infrastructure?
The whole process, the whole system?
Yeah, actually, Calabasas has a pretty good infrastructure, there are some challenges with infrastructure, just because you're a very green city, a lot of trees, so we do get some root intrusion, more than maybe other places, but we're usually able to get ahead of it and prevent any problems in the city. But overall, you know, like I said, 94% of your infrastructure is free of significant defects, so it's in pretty good shape.
Thank you very much, good to hear.
All right, and we save the best for last, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the mayor of the city is also a plumbing engineer, so I've got a few questions for you. The sewer charges, you say, are on our property tax bill, is there a charge on our water bill at all for sewer?
For Calabasas, I believe that Los Vergines Municipal Water District, because they provide your water, also do too many disposals, so the bill will be on their bill.
Okay, and so we have a sewer charge on our water bill, is there also a sewer charge on our property tax bill?
The only one you'd have on your property tax bill would be for the Sewer Maintenance District, and that's the charge you're talking about here today.
Gotcha, so there's, there's two separate charges, just making sure our public knows that there's, that the one that's going up is the one on our property tax bill?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's the one that's, it's $50, and it's going up to 96 after five years.
Okay, and as far as the one on our water bill, we're not talking about that here today, as far as the usage fee?
No, so that's entirely up to Los Vergines Municipal Water District, we're not involved with that.
Okay, great. We mentioned the house laterals being the, owned by the property, so property owners own that line from their house all the way to the street?
All the way to the connection to the sewer line.
Which is actually under the street, which is owned by the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, so just to make our, our community aware, if there's root intrusion in that line, the homeowner is not only responsible for the line on their property, but also for that line all the way to the center line of the street or wherever the sewer might be?
That is correct.
So any advice you can give us on the trees we should not have in our front yard because they're invasive to their, to our sewer lines?
I don't have that information with me right now, but I'd be happy to share with the Director of Public Works, and you can probably pass it on to the city.
Yeah, if you could share that with us, that would be great, I'd love to get that out to the community, because I've seen a lot of problems in that area, and people are really surprised when they find out that they're responsible for that maintenance, so I just want to make that clear.
Good point.
In the slide that you, we'll skip that, you mentioned $2 million in city repairs are anticipated coming forward here?
Let's see, correct.
And when do you have those scheduled for, are they, are they on the calendar yet? Are they gonna happen this year or next year, or how far out is that?
So they are on a priority list, and our priority list right now, we are gonna, we're committing, after this rate increase, to spending $5 million per year for the next five years, and that's the timeframe we've actually put out to address all the critical infrastructure within the entire district.
Okay.
Yeah.
And $5 million for the whole district, what percentage of that might we see in Calabasas?
So obviously, we're gonna handle the 2.2 million within that five years, that's a critical infrastructure. We're also going through another cycle of condition assessments, so some other priorities could come out of it, but the idea is to, all, all, all the infrastructure that right now we have identified that has significant defects in the district, to handle within the next five years.
Okay. Last question I've got for you, is our Los Vergines Municipal Water District is working on a project they call the Pure Water Project?
Correct.
Using common technology, reverse osmosis to, to treat effluent from our waste treatment plants and, and turn it back into healthy drinking water? Does the county have a program like that going on right now, too?
We do not, but we do collaborate with agencies such as Los Vergines or the San District, because they can run the bigger treatment plants, and we supply them with the wastewater, so we do work together with them to make those projects a reality.
Okay, so your, your plants are only the four smaller plants?
They're four smaller ones, three in Malibu and one in Lake Hills.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all the questions that I had, if there's any questions from members of the Seeing none, I want to thank you for your presentation, and we'll make sure to get this information out to the public.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I know it feels like we're well into the meeting, but we've now got to the section of our agenda that calls for council announcements, so I'm gonna start with Councilmember Shapiro.
All right, I'll run through them quickly, I just want to thank the chamber and the attorney forum and the city who put on yesterday annual law day, Council, Mayor Protem Bazagin and I represented the council part of that, but there were attorneys from all walks of life in all areas providing free legal service to the community, and it's a great, great, great opportunity, and I'll leave the other announcements for the chamber to Mr. Levinson. Just want to mention, the Calbas High School Theater Program just received amazing awards, it's, I don't know if it's the first time they've received two, but they received the Best Production Award and Best Actress, Riley Eichberg, Eichberg, for the Jerry Herman Awards, which are held every year, I believe, at the Pantages Theater for all the high school musicals in the entire LA County area, and that is tremendous, and last but not least, I, I said it last time, I was early, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there and sitting up here, so.
Mayor Protem Bazagin?
No, I do not have any other announcements.
Okay, Councilmember Albert?
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one, May is wildfire awareness month, and it's always a good time to prepare for wildfires, especially when you see the beautiful mustard seeds in the hills, but with lurking danger ahead, so the Resource Conservation District of Santa Monica Mountains is hosting a free two-day seminar, and that will take place at the Calabasas Community Center Friday evening from May 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday morning from 9:30 to 12:00. Learn about home hardening, defensive space, native plants. It's gonna be a way of life with us, so please attend, I think you'll get a lot out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Weintraub.
I also just wanted to echo my congratulations to the Calabasas High School Theater Program and Riley Eichberg for winning the Best Lead Actress at the Jerry Herman Awards. It's so exciting that she'll be competing next month on Broadway on a national scale. So we always say the talent in our backyard is really such high level, and this is just, goes to show that. So congratulations to Riley and all of the CHS Theater Department.
Great, and I'll just add a couple things for those of you that want to get involved in the community. Our Budget Committee is a standing committee and now meets agendized and announced in public, and it'll be right here in this chamber tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Councilmember Albrecht and I will be there, come join us. Also, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy meets on a regular basis to discuss items protecting our open space, and they'll be meeting on Monday, the 12th, at 6:30 p.m. at King Gillette Ranch. Those are the, all the announcements that I have, so if we're done with that, we can move on to some public comments here. And I'd like to start with Clark Canfield, and if you could give us your name and city of residence, you'll be given three minutes to share on any item not on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
Good evening, Council, City Attorney, Assistant Manager, City Manager. I appreciate the time this evening. I live in Calabasas, specifically in the Deer Springs tract area, and I wanted to address a, what seems to be a city survey about traffic in our neighborhood, entitled Concerned About Traffic in Your Neighborhood, and on the other side, it says the city is seeking information about current traffic levels and existing traffic calming improvements, such as medians and speed bumps. I have talked to several people in the neighborhood about this, and the feedback that I've gotten is the survey is a bit lacking and, in some respects, misleading. Obviously, there's a lot of traffic concerns in our neighborhood. There's items on here that aren't even addressed in the survey. So it's a little bit of a, of a concern in that respect. They also expressed, people have also expressed concerns about really what's behind this survey. There was no information on how this, where this is all coming from or what the end results are. It's not fully encompassing in any respect. It's, has limited perspective or area traffic history even noted anywhere in the survey. I happen to have lived there for over 35 years and know a lot about the traffic and the history. And, you know, I, I, one time, at one time I served on the Traffic and Transportation Commission of the city, and if nothing else that I learned from that experience is that traffic safety and road regulation, road and regulation designs and rules and processes of our, of our streets are normally not directed or not based off of public opinions or perceptions. They're normally based off of standardized traffic engineering methods and measuring and somewhat scientific in nature. So getting, you know, just unsolicited and unclear information from the, from the public, I, I found a little bit strange. I'm assuming that the city, or whoever was involved with this within the city doesn't know the history of the Deer Springs area, but it did talk about in the survey, the median strips and... Is that it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mark Levinson. I reside in Los Angeles, the media past Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. Pardon me, as everyone knows, we had Law Day this week. We were fortunate to provide services of the attorneys in our community to residents who just had questions, wanted some information and direction. And I'd like to thank, of course, Mayor Protem Bazagian and Councilmember Shapiro, who also volunteered their time, come out and make, met with the seniors, the citizens of the area, and answered their questions, so thank you for that. The chamber's premier wine event is taking place Friday evening, right outside. We encourage everyone to come. It's our 26th year. You can start checking in at 5:30, and for everyone who is not physically present, bring your ID, because if you want to drink, you need your ID, and you will get a badge at that time or a wristband, so that there's no one underage drinking, we're very concerned with that. Later this month, our networking luncheon is moving to the Country Club. The sponsor that time will be Valley Village. It's a group that deals with developmentally disabled adults. They have residential homes throughout the San Fernando Valley and day programs for them, and it's an incredible group, and without being prejudiced, I am President of the Foundation Board for Valley Village. And then, just want to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day, which is coming up, and thank you for the time.
And Mr. Levinson, before you leave, if you could clarify, for those that want to attend the wine tasting event, do they need tickets in advance, and where do they get them?
You can purchase tickets there. Most people have registered in advance, but you can purchase tickets at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Any members of the City Council that wish to pull an item on the consent calendar?
11 and 13.
11 and 13, anybody else? Okay, we'll start with 11 then. Councilmember Albrecht, number 11 is Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, List of Projects to Be Funded in the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget for the Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, I think I'll need Curtis here to answer some questions, so he's in...
Nope, I think Michael's getting him right now.
Thank you.
Should we, yeah, let's go ahead, and we'll do 13 while we're waiting for, for Mr. Castle. Let's do penalties for prohibited motor truck parking, the updated rate schedule.
Okay, and Michael, you gonna be able to handle that?
Sure, I'll give it a shot.
Okay, good. So I'm very happy to have this on here, I'm not opposed to it, but what I would like to know, what agencies are authorized to give the tickets? So we can't depend on one, the deputy, all the time. Are there multiple people, so we can be sure that we're covering, making the coverage? That's one of my first questions.
Yes, excellent question, Councilmember. So in addition to the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station issuing citations, the city contracts with Secure, all Security Corp. to issue parking citations to supplement the services.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear.
Two different firms issuing those citations.
Excellent, and that security firm is doing it at night as well?
Correct.
So we're 24/7 on the tickets?
They can issue it whenever we want, yes.
Great. What if the tickets are not paid? Who is the ticket paid to? Is it payable to the county, and they reimburse us, or is it payable to the city?
No, like, like any parking citation, it's payable to the city.
Okay, and what if they're not paid?
There's a lien then on the driver's record, and so they'll have to pay that before they renew it.
Good.
Their registration.
Excellent, and are there any late charges if it's not paid?
Good question on that, I, I could certainly look into it and get back to you, but it is not easy to continue to have a registration and a driver's license when you have a parking citation. We get folks who try to not pay that in here a couple times a month, and they wish they would have paid it the first time.
Okay, great to hear, thank you. You've answered all my questions on that.
A question on item number 13, Ms. Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, just a brief question. I know this is fantastic, thank you and staff for implementing this so quickly. It's very important to all of us. If there are other areas in the city where we are now seeing or finding trucks that are parking or idling for, oh boy, four to six hours late at night, that are not necessarily on that particular stretch of area, what can we do? Do we report that to you at this point, or to the City Manager?
Yeah, so to, to your first question, we've actually cited a few times on Calabasas Road for this ordinance, because as I believe the council is aware, the signs have been posted not just on the Agora Road, but it all mean arterial roads in the city.
Right.
To the second part, where should they report it? They can certainly report at City Hall, they can use our Connect Calabasas app, or they can contact the non-emergency line at the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station.
818...
That was given out earlier.
818-878-1808, correct?
Yes.
That's correct, I'm getting a head nod.
Thank you very much.
Okay, was that it for item number 13?
Great.
Okay, as we back up to item number 11, I first want to thank Courage Castle for stepping out and speaking with a resident here on a pertinent issue. Want to remind everybody that you can address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda, but we cannot engage with you in those items. But that doesn't stop our wonderful city staff from jumping up and taking hold of the problem, so thank you for that. And with that, we have a question on item number 11 for you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Okay, so this is an interesting project. We've all been looking forward to discussing this, and so I know we have a number of goals to achieve with this, but having spoken with the dealers on that street for quite a long time, I know their concerns and how they feel. And I think the number one thing with that, people have a concern, and maybe you can add this, that it would be a detriment to the flow of traffic. How do you feel about that? Because I know we want to impede the speed, that's one of the goals, but as a detriment to the flow, if you reply back...
Councilmember, for clarification, are you referring to item number nine instead of item number 11? Regarding the roundabout at Muro Road, item number 11 looks at our SB 1...
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, 11, did I say nine?
No, you, you said 11.
Yeah, item 11, the Road Repair and Account, blah, 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 I'm sorry. Well, I apologize, I've got my numbers mixed up, but it's the roundabout, so I thought that...
Item nine.
Item nine, I'm sorry. It's on the other page, this page, so getting back to that, thank you for the correction on that, City Manager. You know, there's concerns about it. I think the needs that we have certainly are landscaping, I like to see that, but the impediment, I think, is the big thing.
Yeah.
And, and one other one, on, when that's completed, the concern of traffic coming in, because about the zoning of the area behind it, where there isn't any development, where there could potentially be development. So it's hard to throw two questions at the same time.
Sure, well, thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate the questions, and I understand roundabouts, it's funny, it's an old technology, but it's coming back, so it feels very new. So as far as impeding traffic, the current configuration at that intersection, it does perform well for the predominant traffic flow. So for those, if we can visualize driving essentially west or up Calabasas Road, making a right onto, to the bridge on Muro, and those coming off the bridge, making a left on the Calabasas Road, it facilitates that traffic well. A roundabout will facilitate that traffic just as well as the current configuration, with the enhancement that when there is traffic continuing straight on Calabasas Road, it's vastly improved under a roundabout, because right now, the current intersection configuration is very awkward to navigate for, for straight traffic, for traffic continuing straight on Calabasas Road, and the drivers making turning movements aren't expecting anyone to go straight. A roundabout will basically organize all of that. It's also gonna add in pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. And so the flow of traffic will be smooth, smoother and continuous.
I felt the same way, but I wanted to hear it from you. Thank you, looking forward to that, I know it's gonna be a great project.
And I, I can't answer for the planning question. I can say that it just makes the movements going straight on Calabasas Road safer. And we do have people that go down there, there is limited development there, but there are people who go down there to hike, and we know the dealers do drive cars up and down the road as they've either repaired them or they're going on test drives.
Well, I know that road is a raceway at night, and also we have a lot of customers and clients that go there at night to shop cars, so we want to make it safer. And I'm hoping that'll absorb that speed and reduce it, so thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent calendar? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Albrecht. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries 5-0. Oh wow, we've got a full agenda tonight. Public hearings, none. Continued business, none. New business, and none. Wow, this is what, like, I don't want to jinx it, but, all right, I won't say a thing.
We're going into budget.
All right, yeah, don't forget budget tomorrow, everybody. Oral reports, does the council have anything to report?
Did want to say that I attended the League of California City State Board meeting last week on the 25th and 26th, and that was in Sacramento. So that's my report.
All right, thank you for doing that. Councilmember Weintraub?
Councilmember Albrecht and I had a great meeting discussing LA 28 and ways that the City of Calabasas can be a part of that, and there should be some items forthcoming to the council. And we have another meeting scheduled... End of the month, so, a lot of ways for Calabasas to be involved.
Okay, Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to follow that up, we discussed also having a meeting every month, so we gained some momentum. It's gonna be an exciting template to move forward with the process. I did attend the Clean Power Alliance meeting we had recently, and this time of the year is the rate-setting event. And it's always a little nervous time, it's hard to predict what's gonna be with the rates, and it's so much subject to SCE rates, which are gonna come out on June 1st. But we have good news, and it's really gonna pretty much hold where we are right now going forward, and there's a very good chance that people that are in the know seem to feel that toward the end of the year or even the beginning of next year, rates are gonna soften a little bit, so we don't have to stand biting our nails. But the final rates will come out after SCE opens up on June 1, and I'll have more to report in the future.
All right, Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, and I attended part of the CPA meeting with Councilmember Albrecht as well, and also attended the SCAG Regional, General Assembly, Regional Council and General Assembly, with Assistant City Manager Trujillo was there as well. We are going to spending a great deal of time in the coming couple of years on preparing and working on infrastructure, transportation, housing, and so on for the 2028 Games, and we, it was a very good conference. Hopefully, we may even end up with a potential grant for some opportunities in the city from that conference. Attended a Valley Economic Alliance meeting, and attended the, I guess it's really not part of, oh, it's part of the school system, the Rhythm and Choose event at Agora High School, which is, consists of both middle schools in our city, the middle schools in Agora, and high school music programs, as well as the superintendent's special band, which played as well. It was a very nice event.
All right, thank you for that, and I'll just make note that I did drop into the Senior Center Volunteer Appreciation Event, which was on the 29th of April, it was a full house. I also went by the Pure Water Event, which was actually held in Oak Park by the Las Vergenes Municipal Water District promoting... by the Las Verginis Municipal Water District, promoting their, their future water purification system. And the Ad Hoc Committee for the Landfill Issues has met a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, both in person and virtually. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
No reports, but do want to remind the, the community about the Neon Skate Night at De Anza Park. That's also on Friday. If you choose to go to the wine tasting, we prefer that you do not drink and skate. So pick one or the other, but I encourage you to support both events. So thank you.
And I'll just add to that, that Ms. Green did share with me that they will plan another Neon Skate Night for those of us that are missing it, to be at the wine tasting, just in case. You had your heart set on that. With that, I think we are, we've reached the end of our scheduled business, so we are now going to adjourn to the next regular meeting, which will be held on May 28, 2025.